Can I entertain a motion to come out of closed session?
Remove.
Have a second?
Second.
Start the voting with Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Come on, ask all the board members to certify. Whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed session in this state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and on a motion to close the meeting in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas Section 2.2-3711D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. And we went under Section 2.2-3711D, A1, A3, and A6. Now therefore be it resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed session to which this certification applies. And all such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies. I'll start with you, Mr. Early?
I so certify.
Mr. Bryant?
I so certify.
Mr. Horton?
I so certify.
Mr. Moore?
I so certify.
And I so certify. And next on the agenda, exhumation and pledge. I'll ask Mr. Bryant if you'll lead us in that place.
Dear Lord, we've come to tell you tonight, Lord, we just thank you for allowing us to be here. We asked you that you'd help us in our decision making for the county, and we give you praise and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next on the agenda is Robinson Farmer-Cox. I'll ask you to come up, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That's going to be with you all this evening. My name is Forden Jones, and I'm the partner, not the partner anymore, manager in charge of the audit. Start filling that all the way down here, so if I go through this too quickly, just let me know, and I'll try to slow up. You should have a couple of documents. You've got my presentation, and you should see the financial statements. I've pulled everything we need in this presentation document, so we won't need to refer to those financial statements unless, of course, you want to. All right. We'll start out over on page two of the presentation. This page summarizes the reports that we issue as part of your financial statements. There are the auditors' reports. There are three of them. There's the independent auditor's report, which can be found on page two. It's unmodified, clean report. The highest level assurance that you can receive. And luckily this year, we had no new Gatsby pronouncements, so it should be pretty straightforward from the previous year, if you consider these financial statements straightforward. The other report that we issue as part of your financial statements is independent auditor's report on compliance and other matters. It's on page 126 of your financial statements. This is also referred to as the Government Auditing Standards Report, or Yellow Book Opinion. We had no material compliance matters that were disclosed, but we did have one finding related to adjustments. Those adjustments were adjustments for the school board's books. The county's books had some minor adjustments to, but the county's school board's adjustments were material enough that I felt like we needed to put a finding in the report. And I'll talk more about those adjustments as we proceed through this presentation. Any questions about that before? The last report is the Uniform Guidance Report. This is on federal funds that you all receive, either directly from the federal government or through the state. This report's required when you expend funds in excess of $750,000. It's federal funds in excess of $750,000. It's a clean, unmodified report. No internal controls noted there. No material compliance matters or question costs out there. Any questions about those three reports? Okay. Over on page three, you have our communication to those charged with governance, and this is our communication to you all at the end of the report. It's also required at the end of the audit, excuse me. It's also required at the beginning of the audit. We do that through the engagement letter, which you all probably saw back in May, hopefully. This is just a summary of the audit process. It's a clean report, other than we do note the adjustments that we had for the school board. That's noted over on page four. And if you'll turn over with me to page six. The adjustments that we made as part of our audit start there, and there are six pages of adjustments. And basically what that means is when we receive the financial statements from Justin or from the school board, we can adjust them as your auditors. They want us to be independent from the reporting process. They want the financial statements to be your financial statements, and if as part of our audit, we find adjustments and we make those adjustments to agree to generally accepted accounting principles, then that may be something that we report a finding on. Does that make sense? So why the adjustments? I think number one, the consultant that helped the school board was new, somewhat new, been three or four years since he's done it. And I, you know, I guess, just like all the rest of the accountants out there, we're just too much work and not enough time to do it. But, you know, these adjustments aren't indicative of fraud or anything like that. It's just getting the financial statements to agree to generally accepted accounting principles. And it's a common finding to have in the report. You all haven't had a finding like this in a couple of years. Justin has been getting the books ready, and of course, he got the books ready for the county. This year, they decided to use the consultant for the school board, and a few adjustments were needed. Any questions about those adjustments? Okay. That's the, that's the technical side of the things. Now we can move on to the fun part. Page 12. Page 12, you've got a balance sheet for the full accrual statements. That's up at the top. That's under that blue schedule there. It's exhibit one. If you look in your financial statements, this is a summary of exhibit one. And at the bottom, you have exhibit three, shows five years of that. At the top, you have more of a long-term perspective. It's full accrual. It includes all of your long-term assets. For example, this building. It includes all of your long-term debt, for example, the debt you issued to pay for this building. About a third down the page, you see net position. Net position for the county is about $60 million, 277, 318. Seventeen million of that is net investment in capital assets. That's just the assets that we're standing in, for example, minus the debt. You have some restricted funds of about a million, and in your unrestricted are your funds available for ongoing operations, about 42 million. Below that, you have exhibit three. You have five years of data. I will note that your current ratio is about 35%. That just means your, your current assets are 35 times your current liabilities, which is a very large number. Your debt-to-equity ratio is .36, and you want that number to be as low as possible. So both of those numbers are very, very healthy numbers. Down at the bottom, exhibit three showing five years. Most people, when they look at county financial statements, they look at the modified accrual basis. It's more of a short-term perspective. Doesn't include a bunch of estimated liabilities. Some people might say made-up liabilities that are included on the full accrual statement. So these financial statements or the balance sheet in exhibit three might have more meaning to you than maybe the, maybe the top one does. In the column four, column all the way to the right under 2024, just about all the way at the bottom of the page, you have fund balance. Fund balance for the county, including CIP, including the general fund, not including the school board. It's about 42.5 million. Hundred and thirty-two thousand, that is non-spendable, which is, which are prepaid's or note receivables. You have some restricted funds of about 360 million. Excuse me. And restricted funds are just funds that are, that are restricted by an outside organization, say the state, or could be enabling legislation. Committed funds, 11.449 million. Committed funds are funds that are set aside for specific purposes. These are restricted by the Board of Supervisors. To be able to change any of those funds there, it would require action by the Board of Supervisors. Assigned fund balance of about $7.4 million. That's, again, specific purpose funds set aside. But someone like the county administrator can move those funds if need be. I believe that works for the county here, yeah. That can be, could be Justin, it could be Mr. Watson, it could be you all, if you walked onto designate yourself as those people able to move assigned funds. Unassigned fund balance, $23.2 million. And you can see, if you look back five years to 2020, you had 18 million. It's more than doubled fund balance over that five-year period. That, that first year, 2020, was the first year you went to twice-year collection, so that really kicked off the increase in fund balance that year. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about fund balance here. Net governmental expenditures is about 105 million. That includes the school board. So total fund balance is about 40% of that 105 million. Unassigned fund balance is 22%. That 22% is right in the sweet spot, what we, what we call the sweet spot. You typically want that unassigned fund balance to be about 22% or about 20%, 15 to 20%. Person to person, you might say something different. You might say 16 or 17. Any questions about that? I probably spent too much time on them. Anyway, I guess the bottom line is county's financial statements are very, very healthy. They look, look very good. And the improvement over the five-year periods has just been amazing personally, I think. Over on page 13. This is the general fund, fund balance, general fund income statement on a modified accrual basis. And you can see the numbers for 2024 in the column to the right. Those growth rates to the, to the right are a little skewed because 2020 was the first year that you went to twice-year collections with real estate taxes. So some of these items, you know, may make sense, may not make sense. And also, over that five-year period since COVID, you've received a lot of COVID, kind of like teen funds. So it's hard to get a trend, get trend information when you had those kinds of items happen in the past. Expenditures, 42.8, 42.9, increasing at about 3%. Debt service, debt services below that. Debt service at about 2.17 million. You can see that number. It's been decreasing nicely over the five-year period, and I'll talk a little bit more about debt. You'll see why those debt service expenditures have decreased significantly. Total expenditures increased at about 1.6% over that five-year period. You've got some transfers out to the CIP fund, I believe, of 3.7. Change in fund balance for fiscal year 2024 in the general fund was 1.67 million increase. You ended up with $34.3 million in the general fund fund balance. Ending cash in the general fund, a little over 30 million. And you can see over that five-year period what cash has done. $13.7 million in 2020, over 30 million in 2024. Below that, we do these calculations. People typically ask us how much fund balance is too much, how much is too little. General fund balance, we like for it, like I said, to be about 20, 15 to 20%, somewhere in that range. If you look at the cash balance, you're at about 28%. The fund balance is 32%. That includes all of the funds in the general fund though. So at 32%, it's a little high, but it includes all the funds you set aside. It's either committed or assigned or restricted. Any questions about that? And again, that's based on net governmental expenditures of 105 million. The school, and it includes the school board. The school board had a lot of construction funds this past year with the asset funds and the construction funds they received from the state.
I, I have a quick question.
Yes.
The growth rates that are shown here, is that year-over-year or is that over the five-year period?
It's over the five-year period.
Okay.
But I was trying to explain that they're a little bit skewed because 2020 was the first year you went to twice-year collections on real estate.
Right.
So when you look at revenues and they decrease by .12%, it's probably not a good indication. Sometimes I'm probably better off just to exclude some of those. But, you know, the expenditures are, should be, I mean, there should be decent numbers to look at. Overall expenditures increased by 1.6 over that five, five-year period.
Thank you.
Well. I'll just flip through these graphs. Revenues on page 14. And you can see that property taxes in that blue, that's where you went to twice-year collections. Expenditures on page 15. Looks pretty consistent. Expenditures for the education, the transfer to the schools was 26% in 2020. It's 22% in 2024. The school board has been receiving tons of money. They've received a lot of money from the state, from the federal government. So those numbers can fluctuate significantly. 16 just shows revenues compared to total expenditures for the general fund. Obviously, if revenues are more than your expenditures, your fund balance will increase. Same type of information over on 17 and 18. These are just bar charts. Seventeen is revenue, 18 is expenditures or expenditures. Over on page 19, real quick, and I'll finish up. This is a summary of the debt for the county, something I like to present. Total general long-term obligations of the county is about $20.4 million, 24, $20.5 million. That includes things like net pension liability, net OPEB liability. Those are those estimates or made-up numbers that they add to the full accrual statements, so. Your interest-bearing debt is that general obligation debt of 3.75 million. That's that QSCAB money for the schools. That will be paid off in 2027, I believe. So I think there's only two payments left on that. Those lease revenue notes, that's the county complex, and also some money for school facilities. PSA long-term obligations are noted there, 20.86 million. School board obligations, the school board can't really have interest-bearing debt, generally speaking. So all the debt for the school board, most of the debt for the school board that's interest-bearing is showed on the county side. But they've got some of these estimates that I talked about. Net OPEB, net OPEB liability of $8.4 million. Their net pension liability is about 25, 24.7 million. And then their compensated absences are about 926,000. Total long-term obligations of 34 million for the schools. And again, those are all numbers that are provided to us through actuaries. And they have to be added to your financial statements based on Gatsby 80, 68, Gatsby 75, yes, all kinds of Gatsby. Gatsby stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. That too tells us how to report your financial statements. Population of about twenty-eight thousand eight hundred, so debt per capita for the county, two thousand six hundred and sixteen in twenty-fourteen. For two thousand twenty-three, the state average was thirty-six, thirty-six. Your debt is relatively low. Down at the bottom there, you have debt payments, debt interest and principal and interest. For this year, it's two million one hundred and seventy-one thousand. It's less than five percent of your total expenditures, which is good. So the county, I guess what I'm getting to here, the county has relatively low debt compared to others. And then lastly, real quick, the Government Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, is always issuing new pronouncements. Luckily, this year, for fiscal year twenty-four, we didn't have any. But for twenty, fiscal year twenty-five, we have this new GASB related to compensated absences, GASB statement number one oh one. Just requires you to come up with the estimate for compensated absences differently than we have in the past. In the past, you looked at June thirtieth and said Gordon Jones has twenty hours and he gets paid twenty dollars an hour, so his liability is four hundred dollars. I love to do the math right there, but you get the idea. Now, what you're regarding, try to do is look in the past, see what, what has Gordon taken over the past five years and come up with some sort of estimate that way. Gets frustrating dealing with some of this stuff. GASB statement one oh two, certain risk disclosures, I don't think that's a big deal. There's a new financial reporting model, statement number one oh three, that's fiscal year twenty-six, so we've got a ways to go on that one. And then one oh four, certain capital assets, also fiscal year twenty-six, we've got a ways for that. Okay, I'm sure you all have had enough. Have any questions?
You want to have any questions?
I know you're just now getting these, or if, you're probably just now getting these. If you're looking through it and you have any questions, feel free to email me. Email or call me.
Okay.
And just let me know what your question is, and I'll try to help you.
All right.
Ideally, we'd like to give them to you ahead of time, see if you can look through them and then ask me questions.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brown. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is citizens' time. You want to sign up? Okay. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve A and B together or separate.
I make a motion we approve A and B together.
Okay, have a motion to approve A and B, January thirteenth and January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five together, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting with Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is invoices. I entertain a motion to approve invoices, A and B together, will be one seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, and two-three, twenty-twenty-five, or separate.
I'll make the motion to approve A and B together.
Okay, have a motion to approve them together, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll start the voting, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is new business, the road abandonment resolution that you received in your packet. Do you want to have any questions on it?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Durbin, do you have a copy of what was recorded as far as the easement? Is that available to be read?
I, Mr. Newman has a copy. Yeah, here, here's a copy if you, if you'd like to look it over, but I, I looked at the version of this before it was put to record, but I don't think there's been any changes since I looked at it.
Well, the, the Cliff Notes version I saw looked fine. I mean, I'm sure that's what it says in the resolution, or in that document.
Yes, it's a, it's a mutual reciprocal easement. Each one has rights over the, the property of the other, to the extent that it was consistent.
Along those property lines.
Being abandoned.
Well, if you don't see a problem with it, I don't.
I didn't.
Okay.
Entertain a motion to approve it?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda is the hazard mitigation resolution you received in your packet. It's a resolution of Carroll County adopting the Mount Rogers Planting District twenty-twenty-four Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda is the letter of support that you received in your packet for the BEAT application.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of support for ZITEL for the BEAT application.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Moore?
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir, so go ahead.
Mike or Jody, y'all both are on that. I know Citizens is doing a lot in our community, too. Why can't we have a support letter for them as well? Can it just be one?
No. You can write as many support letters as, as the, as the county would like. What the support letter does is we're going to have other people applying for it, but the support letter is, gives you more points, is what it does. So in the past, over the last several years, we've worked with ZITEL, and when we had our last committee meeting, it was determined that we want to continue to support the company that would, that we've worked with all this time. It's put a lot of legwork in, in order to, to do this. So, no, it is, it's possible to provide as many of those letters as one. The only, you know, there's no harm to it, it won't hurt to do other ones. The only thing is, is it becomes less control of who would be able to provide the type of service you want within the county. So.
I was just curious, I mean, you know, Citizens, we're banking on them to run some stuff in the county, and I was just curious if you could do that.
It's absolutely possible.
But I mean, I trust the judgment of that board, it was just a question I had.
And if, what I can do is I can schedule a meeting again with the broadband committee to discuss this, to see if that's something that they want to support and give a recommendation.
So what do they, what does it do? You said something about knocking points or helping with points?
Well, the BEAT application, the way it works is a provider. So if you have Citizens, ZITEL, Brightsby, Comcast, all of them have the opportunity to apply without going through the county. So they will not ask us for permission to do it. As in body, we picked a provider based on a certain criteria of how they, how they build, where they will extend, whether or not some got kicked out when we originally started because they didn't want to do the whole county. They only wanted to fix certain areas.
Yeah.
So in order for a way for the BEAT application to include some input from your community, because BEAT takes away all the decision-making for the county.
Right.
What the BEAT application, or the process does is gives the local government body the ability to recommend somebody for funding. So they'll get extra points, other than the other ones won't. So they still might, we might write this letter of support for this one, and they get the extra points, but there might be another provider that puts a better application together.
Got you.
And they'll get it no matter what we say. But this is a way to provide some input.
Okay.
If I might add one thing, Citizens has been very innovative in their ability to come into your district and mine, and I'm in full support of that.
Right.
You know, I really appreciate what they're doing.
Absolutely.
So they've been able to get other grants, like Community Connect Grant, that allows them to do DUCSPUR and part of the tours.
I was just wondering if, you know, while that was, you know, I would definitely give ZITEL, you know, I agree with giving them a letter, I just wonder if we could do it.
Oh, I know, yeah. And apparently you can, I didn't think you could, but I guess you can.
All right. Yeah.
More discussion? So I had a motion and I had a second, so I'll start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is the EMS schedule. Entertain a motion for?
I'd like to make a motion. Like to make a motion to change the EMS schedule and to amend the budget, appropriate, appropriate funds, not to exceed three hundred thousand.
Okay, have a motion, do I have, that'd be for the remainder of this?
The remainder.
This budget year?
This budget year.
Okay.
Twenty-twenty-five.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is old business, the only thing we have is committee appointments. Don't think we have any available right now. Okay? So with that, next on agenda is board member comments, and I will start with Mr. Bryant.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the staff and, and the board and all those that work hard to keep the county moving. I think we're moving in a good direction with our EMS and things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Mr. Horton?
Basically, I just want to say everybody, thank you for what you do. I think we're good, we're moving in the right direction as well. A lot of exciting comments. I've heard about things that's changing in county, and I just want to tell everybody thank you for what you do and staff, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Mr. Early?
Well, for once, I really don't have all that much to say, but I do want to say thank you to the citizens of Carroll County for, for making it possible for us to do these projects and improvements, because without their willingness to pay taxes, it wouldn't happen. And my goal all along has always been to try to keep that burden as low as possible. It's going to be a challenging year, but I'm going to continue to try to do that. And then also, thank you to, obviously, everybody who makes our job easy, everyone in county administration, fire rescue, everyone. I really appreciate what everybody does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Early. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I did what everybody said and thank our employees, and I want to give my hat to Justin, he's worked really hard, and it's always good when the audit time comes to see his hard work and clearly appreciate what you do. And Mike and Mr. Durbin and the rest of the board for, for their efforts. And just thank the employees and our EMS, fire, rescue, sheriff's office, you know, they keep everybody safe. And it seems like a long time ago after the temperature today, but we went through a lot of cold, cold days, and everybody's taken care of and out doing their job, and just want to thank them for all their efforts, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And I definitely want to thank all the employees, everything that you do, and looking forward to this new schedule for the EMS, exciting times, I know they are, too, and I appreciate the board willingness to make that happen, and Mr. Phelps's willingness to do it, and employees. You know, this is very exciting, and Justin, we do thank you on the, it's always good to get a nice audit, and appreciate all the work you, Mike, do on everything. And that's all I have.
So, Mr. Watson, you're next. I don't have anything. Okay? Mr. Durbin?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
No comments, all right, sir, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Start the voting, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
I vote yes.